All right. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting of the Dunn County Board of Supervisors to order here at seven o'clock on a Wednesday evening, and a lovely one of that. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance as usual.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada and to this country. Even if it's all with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next to the call of the roll, if the clerk will do so.
Supervisor Johnson. Supervisor Pat Breslin.
Here.
Supervisor Headland.
Here.
Supervisor Score. Supervisor Steen.
Here.
Supervisor Zons.
Yes.
Supervisor Gary Bjork. Supervisor Willsey. Supervisor Quinn. Supervisor Rogers.
Here.
Supervisor Whitzel. Supervisor Kneer. Supervisor Barrier. Supervisor Calabrese. Supervisor Keeter. Supervisor Vogel. Supervisor McCullough. Oh, you're here.
I am indeed.
Supervisor Sean Breslin. Supervisor Vander Mullen. Supervisor Robinson.
Here.
Supervisor Morehouse.
Here.
Supervisor Hagan. Supervisor Thomas. Supervisor Prochnow. Supervisor Gilbert. Supervisor Larry Bjork. Supervisor Bauer. Supervisor Lino. Supervisor Hartong. Excellent.
All right. Are we all here?
We're all here.
Wow, that's excellent. Next, approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion? Supervisor Morehouse moves, Supervisor Steen seconds.
There are two amendments to the minutes pointed out by our very diligent Supervisor Vander Mullen. Under the appointments Supervisor or Civil Service Rating Committee Marshall Mulhoffs name should be spelled correctly. And under the Traffic Safety Commission, Mary Biggs' name should be spelled correctly. Don't tell the sheriff. Are there any other amendments to the minutes?
Seeing none, all in favor of approving the amended minutes?
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion passes, minutes are approved. Presentation of petitions, memorials, and other communications. Anybody? I know that we had a very large number of basically identical emails on the issue of the ATV, UTV trails, which we will be addressing later. And we can make sure that those make it into the record. Other than that?
I have one Christine Kissner, who was in the Human Services for thirty-seven years, recently retired. And we neglected to acknowledge her service for the county at the last meeting, but she's already received her certificate or her plaque. But thirty-seven years she was with the county and did a great job.
Thank you for that. Lot of institutional memory. Walking out the door with that retirement. Lot of good service. All right. Public comments. Do we have anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Seeing none?
I have some.
Oh, yes, sorry.
That's right. These are public comments that were submitted online. Between Tuesday, May twenty-fourth and today, the following individuals submitted a comment: Jared Yonker, Dominique Jockum, Brad Carey, Lisa and Justin Topper, Lori Buschendorf, Bridgette Helen Drun, Nicholas Anderson, Michelle Williams, Sam Zern, Amanda Carey, Carl Spaginetski, Mary Ann Schrader, Ruth Baumgartner, Marty Baumgartner, Wanda Faulkner, Chris Holback, Dustin and Aaron Shackleton submitted the following: Dear Dunn County Board of Supervisors, as a taxpayer in Dunn County and supporter of the ATV and UTV community, I am in favor of opening all county highways and roads to ATV slash UTV traffic. ATV slash UTV road routes are huge, are a huge benefit to our community because they create economic opportunities and access to trails, routes, and destinations to our community and beyond. Please approve the submitted highway request to open the remaining county highways at your next meeting exclamation point. On Monday, June thirteenth, Chris Holback submitted the following: To whom it may concern, I understand there will be an ATV slash UTV vote on all county roads in Dunn County to be used as ATV trails on June fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two. As a taxpayer, I agree with the with using county roads for this purpose. I feel many people in the community and many businesses will benefit from the use of the county roads for these recreational vehicles. Thank you, Chris Holback. On Wednesday, May twenty-fifth, Dale Lean submitted the following: I support the opening of Dunn County roads where it is safe to do so. It is a great benefit to all our communities linking it all together. Thank you for your time. On Wednesday, June eighth, Scott Ebert submitted the following: In my past travels to South Dakota, ATVs and UTVs were most prevalent during driving on Main Street in Custer, South Dakota. Were more prevalent driving on Main Street in Custer, South Dakota than regular vehicles. Custer is a few miles away from a national monument, Mount Rushmore, drawing millions of visitors each year. If they have free access to roads, I think Wisconsin could do the same. On Monday, June thirteenth, Dan Bradenberg submitted the following: We are a tired couple from the Otter Creek Township. We have a Polaris UTV. Though we can trailer our rig to approved routes, it would be easier to be able to drive to them. We really enjoy the beautiful country roads in Dunn County. We are members of the Wheeler Snow Drifters Snowmobile slash UTV Club. We've been donating to the Dunn County organization since we joined three years ago. In addition, routes would be really great. We respectfully request that you approve additional UTV routes in of if all county roads could be approved, that would be great. Thank you for your consideration. On Monday, June thirteenth, Rod Belch submitted the following: Dear Board Members, I am a taxpayer of Dunn County who is a full supporter of an ATV/UTV community. I wish to express my interest in opening all the county roads and to ATV/UTV routes. The ATV/UTV rides are growing interest to many. As the rise of gas prices continue to rise, it is an economically cheaper way to run with an ATV/UTV to some of our neighboring communities and support and celebrate in their community festivals. Opening up the town and county roads to ATV/UTV routes would greatly increase the opportunity to do so and also increase the amount of places that could be traveled. Other counties have done this and even other states have. I believe that this is an opportunity. I believe this can happen and be safe to do so. So please consider this an opening and expanding opportunity for ATV/UTV users to enjoy this beautiful county. And with the expanded trail routes, may also bring in other fellow ATV/UTV-ers from other counties and even other states. More people traveling through means more revenue for the county with purchases of food, fuel, drinks, motels, even other businesses or historic sites or county parks. Bottom line, I believe that there to be several pros for considering this. Thank you for your time to read this and please consider, as I asked, an opening the county and town roads up as routes. Give the ATV/UTV-ers the same opportunity to travel across the county as the snowmobiles have in the winter. And then the last one was submitted on Monday, June thirteenth. As the president of the Back Country UTV ATV Club, which includes Peru Township and the Rock Creek Townships, I'm in favor of opening all county roads to ATV/UTV traffic. Road routes are a huge benefit to our community because they create economic opportunities and access to trails and destinations to our community and beyond. Please approve the submitted road route requests and consider opening the remaining county roads. We have more residents buying UTVs and requesting County Road O and County Road H. We inform them that we are waiting for your upcoming decision of the already requested roads. And if you decide not to open all county roads, then we will request these roads this fall. We will continue. We will accept your upcoming decision. Have a great day and we appreciate all you do for us. Daryl Comral.
Anymore? Okay, that would be the ATV/UTV commentary that I was erroneously placed one item higher on my agenda. Onto appointments, you have an appointment to the Library Board in front of you. This one needs board chair board confirmation, so I would need a motion Supervisor Steen moves Supervisor Vander Mullen seconds. I can speak to this in very brief. Suzanne has been a great Library Board member. She's excited about continuing on. So if no one has any objections, I will move on to a vote. All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Report of the County Manager, Nick.
I have to get permission to speak. All right, thank you and good evening. I have a couple of things, all brief. You'll be happy to hear. The first thing is purchase orders over forty thousand dollars. In the past month, there were four purchase orders over forty thousand dollars. You can see them in the packet. Just a little information about each of these. The first one is for the Highway Department to four control for sixty-three thousand, two hundred fifteen dollars, ninety cents. This is for herbicide materials that were sprayed for weed and invasive control along county and state rights of way to help reduce the cost of mowing operations. The second one, Human Services Family Care Payment. This is a family care payment for two thousand twenty-two. It's three, three hundred ninety-six thousand, four hundred one dollars, thirty-nine cents. When the provision of long-term care services for the elderly and disabled adults transitioned from Wisconsin counties to managed care organizations in two thousand eight, counties negotiated with the Wisconsin Department of Health Services on an amount that each county would contribute toward the provision of services. So this is the amount that was settled on and is reflected in our budget and as a payment of for family care payment. The third Highway Department, again, fifty-one thousand, three hundred twenty-six dollars. This is for high-density polyethylene culvert materials for County Road or County Highway Q, V, and Z projects and replacement culverts for other town, state, and county projects that may come up. And the fourth one, Extension Area Six Contract, fifty-six thousand, six hundred ninety-four dollars. This is the first half of the educator fee for service contract payment that covers the months of January through June. Are there any questions about vouchers? Next, I wanted to give you an update on the budget. Initially, earlier in the year, the County Manager, Mr. Miller, and the County Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Strie, had developed a schedule for the budget that actually would have just started about a week ago. After a meeting, we we decided to move that up in order to give us more of a chance to work with the budget figures, get information. You have, you know, a new CFO and an acting county manager here. And so more time we felt was would be useful to us. So departments and division draft budgets have been completed and submitted. Our CFO has been out of the office, but will be back in, I think tomorrow, maybe the day after. And so more intensive review of budget submissions will begin in the next couple of days. And we will during between now and August, when you get very comprehensive look at the budget, we will be updating continually information about the levy as the Department of Revenue gives us information. Excuse me. Insurance claim amounts, which has an impact on the cost of Dunn County is a self-insured for our health insurance. And so that'll give us information on the cost of insurance coverage for employees and the, you know, the impact, the budget impact of that. And then salary and other fringe benefit projections. Now, in order to pull together some more detail about the various programs and services in each department or division, a number of your management staff held a meeting last week. Chris Corpola, the Human Services Director, Carmen Meyer, the Neighbors of Dunn County Administrator, Dan Dunbar, the Chief Information Officer, Greg Quinn, the Veteran Service Officer, KT Gallagher, the Public Health Director, and myself met. And after some discussion on format and content, Chris Corpola was able to have a a member of the Department of Human Services staff develop a form in Microsoft Excel that department and division heads can use to provide more detail for your information, including statutory references for various programs or services that are provided. Breakdowns of revenue and expenditure amounts, including labor personnel costs versus operational, and then information about the programs. So that will also be, that is underway, just starting, but that information should be filtering in, and we hope to have it in the form that is easy for you to use. And then personnel, last but not least, I guess. I just have a brief update on that. Recruitment of a county manager continues. There are candidate interviews, candidate interviews, and a reception scheduled later this month. It's possible, possibly even probable that you will have a conditionally accepted or conditional offer for a candidate for your review and action at your next meeting, which will be in at the end of, near the end of July, July twenty-seventh, I think. I have hired an Assistant Corporation Counsel. This was budgeted to begin on July first. However, due to Mr. Miller's leaving and my having to take on additional responsibilities as the interim county manager, the Committee on Administration authorized the position to be filled earlier. And so we have a new Assistant Corporation Counsel, Nicole Homer. Nicole is here tonight. I think I've talked to you about her a little bit, a little bit in the past, but she hasn't been here. And Nicole, if you want to stand up and wave, or if you want to come up here and introduce yourself. We found some, we found some furniture in the Department of Human Services that wasn't being used, and so we got our office set up. And so far, it's been pretty smooth. Anyway, here's Nicole to introduce herself.
Good evening. As stated, my name is Nicole Homer. I am originally from New York, but I live in Eau Claire, but my children and husband, well, my husband teaches at Elk Mound and my kids go to Elk Mound under open enrollment, so I do have some connection with Dunn County beyond just working here. My experience has been in-house for governments, but typically tribal governments. I spent a a long period of time with the Ho-Chunk Nation and then the Lakutara Tribe before going solo and then starting here. So I'm really looking forward to getting to know all of you and learning new things and helping Dunn County. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, and?
Supervisor Morehouse.
Erin, thank you, Corporation Counsel. On behalf of the whole Health and Human Services Board, I am delighted to tell you that we have unanimously offered the position of Human Services Director to Ms. Paula Winter. She is currently the Human Services Director in Pepin County. She brings a real wealth of social work background and experience, personnel management and experience, budget management experience, a whole host of skills. And she is delightful, and we are very happy that she accepted our unanimous offer. And she'll be joining the Dunn County family on July fifth.
That'll be your first day.
Thank you, Supervisor Morehouse.
And that's all that I have unless there are any questions. All right, thank you.
Doesn't look like it. Reports of Department, Public Health. You've got the packets in front of you. KT, if you want to wander up front if anyone has questions?
So you guys did receive our annual report. We are required by state to put that together and submit it before the end of April. So that has been submitted to state, but it is here before you to give you guys an idea of what we do and how it was impacted these last, this last year due to our COVID response. With that, if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Supervisor Vander Mullen.
I'm curious what a transient non-community water system is.
Sure. Great question. So public health, like many disciplines, has a wealth of acronyms. So TNC or Transient Non-Community Water System is the size of water system that has enough folks on it for a certain amount of time. So I think it's twenty-five taps for more than oh, this is just outside my, my, my reach here, but I think it's, I think it's sixty days. So it's a number of people or served by a water system so that they have to then have a license through us or the DNR. So it's, so there's, other than municipal, so really large like trailer parks or large apartment complexes have an other than municipal and then municipal water system. So it's really just a level of water systems. Transient non-community is, serves a fair amount of folks, but not a ton. And that falls under our jurisdiction through contract with the DNR.
I also noticed lead poisoning prevention. Is lead poison, does lead occur naturally in some wells or what's the source?
Sure. So the primary source of lead in our environment here is due to our aging housing stock. And so when we see elevated blood lead, especially in children, is often due to their, their environmental exposure due to where they live. And so we'll do a walkthrough with a public health nurse and an environmental health specialist to identify where that lead exposure is. We'll take samples. We had a family just recently this year that's not in the report with two kiddos, one at nineteen microliter, or micrograms per deciliter, and one at fifteen. And so we do believe that that exposure was based on where they live, and we did send off samples to the state lab of hygiene to verify that. So we work with landlord or the family on remediation in a lead-safe manner so that we can decrease additional exposure and work with that family to make sure that the child receives treatment, chelation, so that the lead level goes down and we don't have the prolonged exposure that can result in lower IQ and long-term health impacts. That was a bit of a ramble. Did that help?
Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Yeah, thank you, and it's nice seeing you. At the board meeting where we were doing some funds from from ARPA, Tom had requested, Tom Quinn had requested, I think it was, it was for testing, it was a hundred ninety-some thousand dollars. Was it, was that for nitrate testing? And who, will you, will your office be doing that, or do you have any comment on that?
So we have had a conversation with Land and Water Conservation to make sure that we're working in concert. They are taking the lead on that program. We are there to support. And I don't have anything other than just kind of some peripheral understanding of how that's going to be implemented.
Okay, thank you. And then also, I was here when you were asking for new challenges coming to Dunn County, and I'll always remember that phrase. You did a heck of a job and was there a point where you were wondering if you could not bend anymore without breaking?
Wow, I didn't expect a personal question.
Yeah, your department.
Okay. You know, I am incredibly impressed with the, the way our team rose to meet that challenge and continue to work through challenges related to COVID and returning to normal programming. I think one of the graphs that you see in the report is what our normal baseline capacity for following up with infectious diseases looks like. And what we rose to then fell back and then rose to again. So that expansion, so just thinking about ice and roads, what does it look like when you've got that kind of water makes ice, makes cracks, and then it leaves? And what kind of condition is that road in after two really bad winters? So it's my job in the next year, two, five, to really rebuild that resilience within my team to make sure that they know that they are appreciated and they are capable to do the work that's ahead of them. I need to rebuild that road.
Excellent, thank you.
That would, oh, Carl, do you have another?
Thanks for a beautiful metaphor. And I notice you have a list of communicable diseases. I'm just, I noticed babesiosis, the first one, is a tick-borne illness. Why is that on and not burgdorphia, which is also tick-borne and the cause of Lyme disease? I ask partly because I assume one of the reasons you collect these statistics is to highlight any that aren't going diagnosed well enough. And I think that's true of Lyme disease. I had it for a year undiagnosed. I finally had to ask the doctor to check for it and they found it. So it, I'm just wondering the logic of why these diseases and not some others.
So I'm going to start with saying that it's state statute, and I have no decision-making capacity. I would venture a guess that there is that interest in bringing light to, so very recently, a couple of resistant bacteria, carapian resistant organisms, so things that are not easy to treat were put on, on this list a couple years ago, carbon monoxide poisoning and blue-green algae exposure was put on this list so that we can actually gather the data so we know whether or not we have an issue. So I think that's part of why they make the list in the statute. The reason I put it in front of you is so that you understand kind of where our trends are. We had an infant hospitalized with a tick-borne disease this year. It is serious here. We had an encephalitis death last year. So making sure that people know that they need to wear DEET or another approved insect repellent when they're out, clearing brush or being outdoors is really important. So it helps guide us on what kind of outreach materials we have. So when, if you come see us at National Night Out, we'll have a lot of repellent to give away and some outreach materials on how and when to remove a tick, because of course our data shows that these are issues, so that we need to work towards them, addressing them.
Supervisor Lino.
Yes, you had mentioned a lead level in a, in a family. And you had said something about eleven nineteen. Where is the acceptable line on that where it's, it's not a problem?
Sure, there is no safe exposure to lead.
None, okay.
So the CDC has come down with their, their levels. So state statute still sits at nineteen. Takes a little while to move those things. But CDC has actually come down to three point five.
Okay, thank you very much and an excellent report. Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
Looks like it. Thank you, KT. EW extension. I believe that one is going to be online, Nick?
Yes, we have Jason Hausler, who's kind of the acting, I'm not, regional lead for extension here with Ms. Emanuel's taking another position with the university.
Yeah. Good evening, Acting Chairman and members of the Dunn County Board of Supervisors. Jason Hausler, I'm interim area director for Dunn County. I apologize, I'm on a family camping trip and when the request came in with Catherine's departure and for me to fill in, I said, I'll be there, I'll be there virtually, and I'll do my best to answer any questions you might have. I believe Michelle, our support staff, is also in the crowd there this evening to answer any questions you might have, but the twenty-twenty-one annual report is But the 2021 annual report is in your packet. And as you go through, it breaks down the educators that Dunn County currently contracts with and interim county manager Nick Lang mentioned the first iteration of the invoice has now been processed or is in process. So it's a fee for service. So those are the educators that you currently contract with in Dunn County. And so as you walk through the annual report, it breaks down our operating budget and those program areas, ag, community development, 4H, and then human development and relationships in there. So I I don't I don't have a lot of history with with what's in the report. I've read it and I'm I'm able to answer any questions you might have and I will try to do my my best to answer those. I've been interim area director for all of seven days and attended the Community Source and Tourism Commission last night and and got to interact with those those folks. So with that, I would be open to any questions and and do my darndest to to help. And I I'm I'm actually wanted to say one last thing. I was the 4H educator in Dunn County for six years prior to taking my current area director role. So it is it's a pleasure to be back working with Dunn County and you as supervisors in this interim role. The position that Catherine Emanuel has was holding is posted. And so I don't know how long this interim role will be for me, but I'm excited to be working with you during this this part. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any questions? Seeing none. I think you can get back to your camping trip. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'll be online in case there are things that people want to reach out to me later on. Thank you.
All right. Highway operations, Dustin. And again, you have the report and might as well Dustin may as well introduce himself again. And if you have any questions.
Well, good evening, everybody. In front of you, I did provide the 2021 annual operations report for the Dunn County Highway Department. I would be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Supervisor Keter.
Yeah, thank you. I was wondering, I noticed you're using some brine. Is there history? Is there a projection? It looks like you're going to use more brines, say, especially on high on the interstate and other state highways?
Yes, that is the growing trend. The state DOT is trying to implement to possibly go to all brine routes. We currently have not gone to that in Dunn County, but we are utilizing more brines to help offset the cost of salt. The unfortunate thing in in our state in particular is it only works in certain operating temperatures. So once you get below that 19 degrees, it does not work very well. So we do have to add additives to that which get very costly. So.
Thank you.
Supervisor Kinnear.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I I want to comment that I really liked the report. It seemed kind of personal with the pictures and other kinds of things there. It makes it feel like, yeah, these are the people that we're working with. I especially like the 2021 county road bridge construction projects where it listed the project of the miles and how much it costs. And that that really is is great for the public. And the last month, you talked quite a bit about the I want to use the right term, vehicle registration fee quite a bit. And I can look at that and say, okay, that was 737,000. I can just look right down here and say that. So I know you just talked about it last month, but I I hope that you can kind of change your template or add to your template for each year to say something about the the vehicle registration fee and kind of compare it to this as that's one of the few questions I ever get. This this simple, you know, how much and what it could be used for theoretically and why it's needed. And talk about the state stuff, but you did that last month and but this would be nice, just kind of on a yearly basis. And I appreciate this. This is great. I really like this.
Yep. And we will go in more in depth at the November meeting. Statutorily, we do provide the whole financial packet, so it will be included in that.
Yeah, but I I like this for the public. Now, that's good PR, but you do a lot of great work. And if this is every year, just simple, simple for the public. And even today, I'm sure it'll get reported in in the papers. They do a really great job. So every time it comes out, public says, oh, they're they're using this in a in a good way.
Correct.
And and we can't say that often enough. So keep up the good work.
Appreciate it.
All right. Supervisor Larry Bjork and then Supervisor Headland.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it was last night when I was coming to the CRT committee meeting and it was 100 degrees. And I was thinking about when it wasn't 100 degrees. And I was thinking about what a good job the county did in putting up that snow fence all along Highway 12 for how many miles it was. And I don't know where else you used it. But I mean, that made a tremendous impact on the amount of snow that actually stayed off the highway. So congratulations to those guys. One of those jobs that got to be done and you don't get to sit in a truck doing it. So you got to be right out there in the elements. So it really wasn't 100 degree weather that reminded me of it.
Fortunately, though, the wind blew most of it down.
Yeah, but it it held a lot of snow.
Correct.
Other states face the same kind of things that that Wisconsin does. And, you know, we found a way to generate $700,000 with the wheel tax. What do you see other states doing to fill their gap in what it costs to have roads and highways?
Yeah, I guess I can't speak on behalf of what other states are doing in particular. Obviously, we did provide that fact sheet on the vehicle registration fee that other states are doing for like license and registrations of vehicles. Wisconsin is by far the lowest in the Midwest. Minnesota, in in particular, does a vehicle registration fee, license registration fee based on the value of their vehicle. So if you have $100,000 vehicle, you can pay more for for to register that. I'm not saying that's all what like the state of Minnesota is doing. I can't speak on behalf of what their gas taxes. We in Wisconsin, all municipalities, all counties are in the same boat. We all are tightening our our budget and working with what we have. Unfortunately, it's it's falling behind with the infrastructure that we have.
So I can add that with the legend legislative agenda stuff, one of the things that we had been asking of our legislators is to increase our gas tax so that it would be comparable to other states in the region. So we are actually well below in terms of how we're funding roads through gas tax. So that's a partial answer to your question.
Thank you.
Supervisor Headland.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two parts. First part, if you live in Minnesota, you get to pay a registration fee on every trailer that you pull. If it's a little, you know, four by four or a 40 by four, you you will pay an annual fee to they do have now a lifetime fee. We're going to divvy up the funds ahead of time, but there's a considerable more amount of taxes in terms of gas and vehicles in most other states than we I guess have enjoyed not paying up to 200,000 in Wisconsin. Um, the other question I have, our question I have for you was, is they're doing a a new bridge in the north side of Carnesville? Any idea of the completion date of that? I get a lot of questions about that.
Yeah, so right now that's probably scheduled for about mid-July to be completed. It was a 52 working day contract and it started in early June, so.
Thank you.
Yep. Supervisor Barrier.
Hi, I have a burning question about salt and brine. This is something I'm curious about. So salt, it's cheap, it does a good job. And I like really understand the need for it on the interstates, county highways, you know, that that makes sense to me. But I'm wondering about, so I understand that you guys use a salt gravel mix. And I'm wondering, why is it necessary on like a 25 mile an hour residential road? Why is it necessary to use salt? Why isn't just gravel just a little for traction? Why is it that sufficient in that context there?
Um, so basically, salt is utilized on the state system, state roadways. Anything outside of that, in particular, we use a mixture of salt sand, which is predominantly sand with 5% salt in it. The only reason why that the salt is in there so it doesn't freeze, so we don't have a big ball of sand.
Oh, so it doesn't cake? That makes sense.
Yes, so it's it's a traction agent. And the only reason why we pretty much predominantly do it is because of the cost. The cost for salt is approximately $82 a ton, which is very, very costly. For salt sand, it costs about $13 a ton. So that's the big reason why municipalities and the county system has has elected to use salt sand is due to the cost. If there is a need, we will utilize salt in in certain applications. But predominantly, salt is only used on the state system at this time.
Thank you.
Supervisor Score. Oh, and then Supervisor Steen.
This county road pavement condition, I don't understand the graph.
Yeah, so basically, the graph that was presented. So the DOT requires us to rate our roads every every other year. So actually, this was completed in 2021. It's 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 a scale of one to 10, so one being a very deteriorated road and 10 being a perfect road that was just paved. So obviously, with with our pavement rating conditions in Dunn County, majority of our roads fall into that five to six range, which is right in the middle. As I noted today in the Highway Committee meeting, predominantly what we are utilizing our funds for is those condition states, one and twos and threes and fours. That was a big glaring concern that I have going forward is we are not addressing those five to sixes, which are basically a pulverized and repaved roadway that we could just get away with pulverizing and repaving it. We are getting to a point where we have to let that road pretty much be almost gravel before we we can we can fix it at this time. So like I said, we do monitor that. The state does monitor it. And then the map that that was provided shows basically which roads are at that condition state. Like I said, scale one to 10, one being the worst, 10 being the best. So you do see a lot of sea of blue basically in Dunn County, which I will tell you is concerning for me. So.
Supervisor Steen.
Yeah, Dustin, how'd we come out on our salt last year?
So overall, our winter maintenance was well below our our average. So on average, our our five-year winter maintenance is right around 1.2 million dollars. Just in last year was 829,000. So considerably considerably lower. We do have a I wouldn't say an abundance, but we did have salt carryover from from that last year, reducing our need to purchase salt for this year. We do have a large amount of salt sand. I don't know if anybody has driven by our our facility, but we we do have a very large carryover of that as well. So we will not have to make as much this year, which is going to be a a very nice cost savings. And thank God, because its cost has gone up quite a bit. From last year to to this year is up about $9 a ton from from that. So it's about $90 a ton this year. So.
Do you see salt being in short supply or isn't that one of the things that are in short supply?
We have not had an issue in the past. We do have issues late in the season, let's say, right around February. It's very difficult for for barges to come up the the Mississippi or through Lake Superior. As of right now, they have not said that there is an issue. So we do contract with the DOT to to get those salt materials.
My other question concerns blacktop. Can you tell us what it costs last year for a ton of blacktop and what it costs this year?
So last year, the price of asphalt was $45 a ton. This year, it's $55 a ton. So $10 a ton more. We don't see that getting any better anytime soon.
I don't see any further questions. All right. Thank you, Dustin.
Thank you.
Okay. Consideration resolutions, reports and ordinances from the Standing Committee. Standing Committee is first from the Executive Committee, resolution approving FY 2022 budget adjustments. You've already seen one of these come through before. It's just part of the ongoing bookkeeping of the county. Do I have a motion? Supervisor Headland and Supervisor Morehouse. Any questions or speaking to the resolution? Seeing none, all in favor? Oh, you're right. Roll call. My 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 mistake. If this if the clerk will please call the roll.
All right. Supervisor Sean Breslin. Supervisor Calabrese. Supervisor Calabrese will T S Supervisor Gilbert. Supervisor Gilbert votes yes. Supervisor Hagan. Supervisor Hagan votes yes. Supervisor Hartong. There's a hard tongue votes yes. Supervisor Headland. Supervisor Headland votes yes. Supervisor Johnson. Supervisor Johnson votes yes. Supervisor Kinnear. Supervisor Kinnear votes yes. Supervisor Keter. Supervisor Keter votes yes. Supervisor Lino. Supervisor Lino votes yes. Supervisor Morehouse. Supervisor Morehouse votes yes. Supervisor Procton. Supervisor Procton votes yes. Supervisor Quinn. Supervisor Quinn votes yes. Supervisor Robinson.
Yes.
There is Robinson votes yes. Supervisor Rogers.
Yes.
Supervisor Rogers votes yes. Supervisor Score. Supervisor Score votes yes. Supervisor Steen. Supervisor Steen votes yes. Supervisor Thomas. Supervisor Thomas votes yes. Supervisor Vandermeulen. Supervisor Vandermeulen votes yes. Supervisor Vogel. Supervisor Vogel votes yes. Supervisor Willsey. Supervisor Willsey votes yes. Supervisor Whitson. Supervisor Whitson votes yes. Supervisor Zons. Supervisor Zons votes yes. Supervisor Bauer. Supervisor Bauer votes yes. Supervisor Barrier. Supervisor Barrier votes yes. Supervisor Gary Bjork. Supervisor Gary Bjork votes yes. Supervisor Larry Bjork. Supervisor Larry Bjork votes yes. Supervisor Pat Breslin.
Yes.
There's a Pat Breslin votes last. Chairman McCullough.
Yes.
Chairman McCullough votes yes.
Okay, this time the motion passes for real. All right. Resolution approving the issuance and sale of not to exceed $3.1 million in general obligation promissory notes, series 2022A. Nick, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, yeah, I guess we need to move it first. Sorry, I have a motion.
Jump the gun.
Supervisor Breslin? Yeah, Supervisor Sean Breslin and Supervisor Whitson.
This is back in in November of of last year, the county board authorized the sale or approved the sale of bonds or promissory notes in order to in order to get the funds necessary to carry out the capital improvement plan for 2022. So it includes the capital improvement plan. If you recall, it's a five-year rolling plan. Every year, it's reviewed. We look forward into the future and try to plan what our needs are and then determine how we can fund the plan. Last year, the plan included borrowing of up to $3.1 million for capital improvements. Some of some capital improvements will be funded, I think, directly from levy. So that was approved. That required a three-quarter roll call vote by the county board. And now, now that we're into 2022, this resolution takes that next step of bringing these promissory notes into the market so that investors who typically buy government bonds can have an opportunity to do them. This particular resolution, often the resolution will be styled as the county board's vote triggers the the sale. Triggers the um, the sale. It begins the sale uh, soon as everything is in order and it gets published. Uh, because we're in June already, uh, the Federal Reserve is meeting. Um. I think in July, either the day of the county board meeting or a date within a day or two of the county board meeting. Uh, our uh, financial advisors with respect to the bonds uh, felt that it would be um. The mark, well, the market gets a little skittish. Uh, when you when you drop a three point one million dollar sale on the market. And the Fed is meeting over in one of the other buildings, talking about what interest rates are gonna be. Uh, so they advised us not to do that. Um, and waiting until August or September would probably result in a costlier. Um, loan, which is really what this is. Uh, and so this is styled as what's called a parameters resolution. It sets parameters. Um, that the county board, if this is adopted, the county board uh, is sort of dictating. Uh, the parameters of the sale. And then the county, excuse me. The county board chair and the county clerk bring the promissory notes. Uh, to market and then they're approved by the CFO. The in county manager, in this case, the interim county manager. And the county board chair uh, will be required to approve or authorize the the sale. Um, and then it allows, it allows us with uh, an opportunity to try to find an opportune day. Or week uh, upon which to bring these promissory notes uh, to the market. And try to obtain the most advantageous terms for the for the county. It's not. It's possible it may not need to be three point one million dollars. I think we're gonna need to do a little bookkeeping in the next uh, week or two. Uh, hopefully a week to ten days to try to determine uh, what needs um, we still have with the. Uh, capital improvements plan. Um, that need to be funded with with uh, these promissory notes, the the re- the proceeds from that. Uh, and then we'll be, we have to get raided and then the. The sale will come um, up and we'll have an opportunity to put them on the market. The, this is a. It's an, it's an important part of the capital improvements plan. Um, this is already, these funds are already in our budget as a revenue. Some of these projects have already been started or are planned to start soon. Um, and without this, we will have to review the budget and remove. Lot of maybe not three point one million dollars, but. A lot of capital improvements that have been included as part of the budget will have to be removed. And then, of course, without this revenue to to fund the projects. Uh, the it will come out of the general fund for those items that have already where the expenses have already been incurred. Um. There are any more questions? I'll try to answer them. Um, I've learned a lot about bonds in the last month. Um, we usually retain outside counsel to draft these resolutions and. They don't even let me edit them. Um, to change a word, they do it. And so this is a, this is a resolution drafted by our bond council. And. They've never steered us wrong and we have done uh, this type of resolution here in Dunn County uh, several times in the past few years. Uh, three or four, I think.
Uh, supervisor steam.
Uh, yes, uh, just a point of information for the whole county board. Executive committee had this explained to us and to start with, it was just gonna be the CFO and the county manager. That would be able to execute this and after much discussion, the executive board thought that the uh. County board chairman should be added because he's the only elected one that would be making that decision. So it was unanimous change, so I just point of information.
Thank you, supervisor steam. Anyone else? Uh, supervisor Lino.
Uh, yes, uh, my history um, is with bonds and has been for over twenty-five years. And in reviewing this particular resolution at this particular time, I'd like to encourage the entire county board. With due haste, uh, in light of the interest rates that are at this time out there. Uh, let's go for it, folks, because uh, these capital improvements are for the good of the county. And if we look at our budget, uh, during the course of this year, we will be paying down approximately three point one million dollars worth of debt. And adding it too, so that our debt level is gonna remain the same. And a lot of our debt is quite old, so is at a very advantageous interest rate. So, uh, just like to encourage the board to approve this and move forward swiftly.
Thank you, supervisor Lino. Anyone else? Seeing none? I believe this is a roll call vote as well.
It does not.
Oh, it does not.
It does not have to be a roll call vote. The, this is just to execute what has already been. Approved by the county board through the required three-quarters vote.
Well, that makes it much easier. So, uh, all in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Let me just get back to my agenda here. Uh, planning resources and development committee, rezone ordinance, town of Tainter. Um, if we can get a good motion, put that on the floor. Supervisor Quinn moves. Do I have a second? Supervisor Morehouse seconds. Speaking to the resolution, supervisor Quinn.
Change. The committee had a public hearing, um, heard from the landowner who's making a request. The town of Tanner has approved it. This will be out in the area of of uh, Lake Tanner. And uh, meets all the criteria for a for a rezone approval, so we recommend the board approve it.
Do I have any questions or speaking to the resolution? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, another reason ordinance, town of Dunn. Uh, do I have a motion?
Uh, yes, this is a. Move.
Motion by supervisor Quinn, second by supervisor Morehouse again, and speaking to the resolution supervisor.
Uh, it's quick, real, real briefly. Uh, again, a very straightforward resolution. This is in a property that's uh, located. Really in the residential area of Downsville. And adjacent to that and would be highly suitable for uh, residential development if they wanted to do that in the area. So it was a public hearing. Uh, the landowners testified. We had no other opposition at the board, at the co- committee level. And the town board has approved it, so we recommend approval.
Thank you. Any speaking to the resolution further? Seeing none, all in favor?
Right.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Highway committing ordinance, mending section eighteen point four. Bracket five bracket of the Dunn County code, the ordinance is relating to ATV routes. Um, and this would be a first reading. I need a motion. Supervisor Johnson and supervisor Prochnow. Um. Since this is a first reading, we would normally. Um, then park it for later discussion, but I believe we have a motion from supervisor Prochnow. Oh, your microphone, please.
I did, there it is. Uh, motion to suspend the rules requiring the second reading, so it can become effective tonight.
Second by supervisor Johnson. Um, does supervisor Johnson, do you wanna speak to the suspension of the rules?
Sure, I do. Uh, these trails meet the guidelines set by the highway department and the committee. Uh, such as the site, uh, distance, the length, mileage wise and traffic column. We recommend approval.
I will um, speak just briefly myself to the uh, recommendation to the motion to suspend the rules to have a second reading. Um, this was something that we approved in January when I was still chair of the highway committee. And we intended to bring it forward before this. Um, it got kind of lost in the. Numerous transitions we've had over the past couple of months, so it would be great if we can get this uh, start. Pass that one month earlier for the ATV and UTV folks. So. Um, any further speaking to the motion to suspend the rules? Um, and vote on it at this meeting.
That motion requires a two-thirds roll call.
Okay, vote. So on the uh, supervisor Larry Bjork, are you speaking to the motion to suspend the rules or to the actual motion for the ATV UTV route? Okay, we will come back to you for that. Uh, supervisor Bauer. All right, so a roll call vote on the motion to suspend the rules for a second reading and vote on the resolution at this meeting.
Right, on the motion to suspend the rules, supervisor Calabrese.
Yes.
Supervisor Gilbert.
Yes.
Supervisor Gilbert votes yes, supervisor Hagan. Supervisor Hagan votes yes, supervisor Hartong. Supervisor Hartong votes yes, supervisor Headland.
Yeah.
Supervisor Headland votes yes, supervisor Johnson.
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson votes yes, supervisor Kneer. Supervisor Kneer votes yes, supervisor Keeter. Supervisor Keater votes yes, supervisor Lino.
Yeah.
Supervisor Lino votes yes, supervisor Morehouse. Supervisor Morehouse votes yes, supervisor Procton. Supervisor Procton votes yes, supervisor Quinn. Supervisor Quinn votes yes, supervisor Robinson.
Yes.
Supervisor Robinson votes yes, supervisor Rogers.
Yes.
Supervisor Rogers votes yes, supervisor score. Supervisor score votes yes, supervisor steam.
Yes.
Supervisor steam votes yes, supervisor Thomas. Supervisor Thomas votes yes, supervisor Vandermeulen. Supervisor Vandermeulen votes yes, supervisor Vogel. Supervisor Vogel votes yes, supervisor Willsey. Supervisor Willsey votes yes, supervisor Whittle. Supervisor Whittle votes yes, supervisor Zons. Supervisors, I'm pretty sure supervisor Zons votes yes. Um, supervisor Bauer. Supervisor Bauer votes yes, supervisor Barrier. Supervisor Barrier votes yes, supervisor Gary Bjork. There's a Gary Bjork votes yes, supervisor Larry Bjork. Supervisor Larry Bjork votes yes, supervisor Pat Breslin.
Yes.
There's a Pat Breslin votes yes, supervisor Sean Breslin.
Yeah.
Supervisor Sean Breslin votes yes, chair McCullough.
Yes.
That pass.
Motion passes. Now we can devote some discussion to the actual resolution. All right, so supervisor Bauer.
Just a, just a question on the wording though, but it says ATV routes. And there is a difference between an ATV and the UTV route. Should that be specified in there at all?
In in the ordinance, ATV routes are um, considered routes for UTVs also. Our our ordinance covers both ATVs and UTVs. Uh, it may need a little updating, but uh, these are routes that will be added to the list that both ATVs and UTVs can. Um, can use.
Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Uh, in passing this, uh. Are the the routes then available to use before signage is put up or does signage have to be put up first? And then my second question is, uh, as far as the. Uh, traveling the speed on the county roads, uh, or yeah, on the county roads. Uh, what's the rules and regulations as far as what's a slow-moving vehicle and what is not? Like an agricultural tractor? You know, is it is a speed limit or how is that determined? It's for signage. Who, I don't even know who to ask.
I can look. Uh, the the signage is supposed to be up before the routes can be utilized. I'm pretty sure the ATV clubs uh, who are responsible for this will have those signs up before. You eat lunch tomorrow. And uh, I believe the speed limit for ATVs is is thirty-five miles per hour. I can't remember. Dustin, do you know? I I can look, but it'll take me a minute.
Does that answer your question, supervisor Bjork?
Yes, it does, but I'm I'm asking basically, uh. You know, what's the relationship between an ATV or UTV going down the road? Then uh, me on the Oliver fifteen fifty-five, which I have to display a slow-moving vehicle sign. I mean, uh, what what signage or uh, lighting is required? Uh, to operate on county roads?
That's a fairly complex question. I think, uh. I mean, obviously, lights are required. Uh, front and back lights are required at night. Uh, for vehicles that are moving down the roads. Uh, I don't know if, I I think ATVs, they, when they register, do they have to have a? They get a, like a registration plate or something that they have to affix to the, to the vehicle?
Um. Uh, I I think that most of the answer to your question is covered by state statute rather than county ordinance. Um, having had some experience with uh, ATV and UTV routes, so. Um, I can ask Nick to look into that and get back to you, but I believe it's largely an issue of state governance, not county governance.
Oh, load them on.
Safety of county residents either traveling on the UTV or somebody talking on their cellphone and not seeing it. That's my only question.
Okay, uh, supervisor steam.
Uh, yes, I don't have a UTV or an ATV, but I'm in favor of this ordinance. My question is to the highway department. Uh, from all the uh, comments that we had, uh, uh. Why couldn't we have all the county roads be available? Or is that something that you're thinking about?
Supervisor Johnson.
Well, uh, the main reason, from what I understand from our meetings earlier. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dustin, but it's usually sight and the length is quite a concern. Uh, and the traffic column. If you have a lot of traffic, they, it can be more dangerous. From what I understand, it's thirty-five miles an hour max speed for an agricultural vehicle, from what I understand, and I don't know that it's for sure, it's twenty-five. I believe.
Um.
Is there more to add, add Dustin or? You have.
If 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 I might, having chaired the the highway committee, um, through many of these discussions, uh, we have. Discussed that in the past and have chosen not to do so. I'm sure it's something that will come up. On an ongoing basis, uh, going forward. Uh, it was largely. When it was first brought up, would have been about ten years ago. Um, it was considered a safety issue. Um, and possibly a liability issue for the county, so. Um, those were the things that we were looking at at the time and and we have gone through them on and off again. Supervisor steam.
Yeah, the reason I bring that up is that, uh, it would appear that. I mean, and I would bow bow to any information regarding safety, but. Uh, I think part of our goal is to kind of try to make our our county as friendly as possible. And it, this seems to be just an exploding situation, so uh, that's my only comment. Thank you.
Dustin, do you, anyone have any more questions that Dustin or Brian? Go ahead.
Well, I'd just like Dustin to explain more what the safety concerns are. For one thing I wanna bring up. You you have to realize that a UTV ATV, they do not need signal lights, for one thing. And uh, I own one, I own a UTV. I have a rear rear mirror. I do not have side mirrors. And to be honest with you, it's dangerous if you don't have side mirrors and that's not required.
Yeah, like basically the county stands uh, in from previous is uh, we were only allowing connecting routes. Um, due to the safety and liability. Um, at first, uh, obviously. We do look at site distance criteria. We do look at traffic volumes. Uh, we look at shoulder widths, uh, any type of safety hazards that we see um, with intersection uh, visibility restrictions. Um, that's a big, big reason uh, why the. The current roads have been approved and what roads have not been approved. Um, the ATV clubs do present quite a few of them every year. Um, and like I said, the. It, a lot of it's based on safety, um, is the big reason why the, some of these routes have not been approved and. Have set forth, uh, currently, so. Um, the one thing that uh, I know has been a discussion uh, with other counties is the enforcement of the thirty-five mile an hour speed limit. Um, that's something we will have to look into, um, but I believe statutorily, we cannot enforce that on a county level. Um, so that is something we will have to look into. Um so that is something we will have to look into. Um. And I know a lot of other counties are are have that in their ordinance as well, and currently I believe statutorily we cannot enforce that. I don't think it's been an issue, but.
Yeah, um Nick?
One other factor, excuse me, one other factor that really has a bearing on this is that the intent of. Of. Counties being authorized to open their their county roads for connections. Is to make recreational opportunities um was um possible. But primarily, it's it's meant to be able to connect off-road trails to each other. And and town roads, uh they have their own authorities, uh villages have their own authority to. To open and the the intent as is was expressed in state law. Is to take into all of those considerations, safety, traffic, et cetera. Uh and then limit the, you know, make your best effort to limit the tr- the trails that you approve. Uh to connections so that that people can get from one off-road trail to another off-road trail or can get from. An off-road trail to a service station to to refuel. You know, it's it's meant to. Help the recreational activity. I think it's fair to say that UTVs, the advancement. In sophistication and mechanical. The genius, I guess, of UTVs has gone way faster than the legislature's um. Willingness to to let um counties open up the roads. There are still a lot of problems, a lot of the rules of of the road. Don't apply to ATVs and UTVs. And I think any discussion um involving opening up county roads is going to have to have the sheriff at the table. In order to help us uh determine what difficulties, what obstacles uh would be presented by that for law enforcement.
Thank you, Nick. Um is there any further discussion on the Supervisor Lino?
Yeah, I I just have one uh kind of a, you know, the. An issue is we're looking at connecting trail to trail and in Downsville, we've got Highway twenty-five. Uh you know, County Road C and Z out and out of that area right there. I I don't know how you're going to deal with that because that's a state road. Uh just Dustin, I was wondering if you're aware of that, if there's any type of. Plan to improve the bridge or give it a a an individual lane? You know, at some time in the future, something that might be in the offing?
I I guess I cannot speak on behalf of a DOT state road. Um what their intent would be. Um basically, the state only allows crossings right now. Um you can only cross across uh a state highway, you cannot have it on a state highway. Unless it's posted at uh thirty-five mile an hour or less. Then the local mu- local municipality can actually take, take authority over it.
Okay, and I I'm gonna go ahead and pull us back because I think that's a little bit outside the scope of this resolution.
Okay, all right. I just just wondered if there was anything. You know, because that's kind of a pointed conjecture in our territory, my territory here.
Yep.
And uh just wondering if there was anything in the offing, that's all.
Uh any more speaking to the resolution? Supervisor Willsey.
I did have one question uh was brought up about liability, the county would have liability if we open all county roads. Can you speak to that?
I'll try. Um presumptively, there would not be liability. Um it's a. Risk management strategy. If you don't allow it, somebody to do something, you can't ever get in trouble for them having done it. Whatever might occur. And I think that's really where the liability issue comes uh to play. But anytime you have a motor vehicle on a county highway. Um there are, you know, there's always the potential for someone to make a claim. It's, I would say, probably once every couple of years, we get a claim filed against the county. Uh you had too much gravel. Um s- you know, spilled up on the roadway and I went in the ditch and it's your fault. It isn't. But people make claims, and so honestly, if you don't, if you don't open all the county highways to ATVs and UTVs. Um that reduces the impact or the potential for claims to arise out of. Other people's, you know, out of their operator's use of the county highways.
Any others speaking to the resolution? Okay, seeing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh reports from the standing committees, we do not have those this evening. Um that is a, it's a standing item that we put in in case anyone exact needs to feel the need to. Share something with the board and we failed to strike it from the agenda this time. Announcements, I don't have any. Does anyone else have any? Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Mr. Chairman, I just would like the board to realize what a success the June Dairy Month. Uh uh breakfast was at uh Deech Farms up near Sand Creek. And uh for the family to open up their uh business for anybody and everybody to come. I think they had over twelve hundred people. And uh then let's not forget, there was a hundred volunteers and the guy sitting right up there in the corner. With that gray hair was one of the tractor drivers and did a great job. Yeah. Remember I asked you about why you weren't wearing a hat? That's all. Well, anyway, it wa- it was a great time. Uh held, uh many people really enjoyed it and it and Dunn County looked really good.
Thank you for bringing that up and and you know, guys like Larry and I, we notice people's hair.
That's right.
All right, um our next meeting will be Wednesday, July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two at seven o'clock PM. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you all.